Time to light this candle. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the DeKalb City Council Regular Meeting of August 22nd to order. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Here.
Larson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Perkins?
Here.
McAdams?
Here.
Verbic?
Here.
Faber? Mayor Barnes?
Here.
Seven i.
Oops. All right. And then moving on to Agenda Item B, I'd like to call it Mr. Hy-Vee himself, Seattle Gentry. You wanna lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job as always, Seattle. All right, moving on to approval of the agenda, I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven i.
All right, the agenda has been approved. Moving on to D, Presentations, we have none. Then Agenda Item E, Public Participation. I know we have a bunch of people that wanna participate, but that'll be during the public hearing. So moving on to Appointments, can I just read both appointments and we approve them both simultaneously? Or do I have to do one by one?
You can.
Yes, sir.
I actually wanna do the public presentation.
Oh, during public comments?
Yeah.
Okay, so normally we have you fill out a form.
Which is it?
Oh.
Well, did you wanna do public participation or the public hearing?
I actually wanna do both, and that's why I put it both.
Okay.
Okay. Our mistake, then. Go ahead and come up to the podium and introduce yourself.
Sure.
Just so you understand, it's three minutes is what you have for public participation.
I'm Jeff Leesendahl. I am a trustee of the Northern Foundation, and I'm actually the co-chairman of the Presidential Task Force, Northern's Presidential Task Force, on the Revitalization of Greek Life at Northern. So I've been working with 15 other people for a whole year, pulling a committee together to try and reinvigorate Greek life at Northern. Eighty-two percent of our students live in the Antiglen North neighborhood, so I wanted to come here today and just thank the city council for the amazing job that you guys have been doing. We have absolutely seen it, from tearing down of the theater and that, to the cul-de-sac work that's going on, to the street signs. We are thrilled to death with the progress that's going on with, how could I forget, Hunter Properties and the other stuff that's going on with the, what's going on right now with the other apartment buildings that you guys approved last meeting. We are just thrilled to death what's going on. We are working, our goal is, we've worked an entire year, we have a, almost draft done of our report. We hope to present that to President Freeman prior to homecoming, and then publicly present that to the, to the community at large. We expect to have, I don't know, 70, 80 recommendations on what the university can do to increase Greek life, and again, how it reflects the city as we hope to repopulate that neighborhood with students. One particular thing that I wanted to raise, very, you know, just to congratulate for your work, one of the bigger houses in Greek Row is the Delta Zeta Sorority House. It is the oldest sorority at Northern, started in 1955. They actually were closed. They were, had their house for sale. Their national office had decided that, that the neighborhood was unsafe, and they did not want their, their, their students there, and they had put the house on the market. The task force met with them endlessly. We explained to them what the university was doing, and more importantly, what the city was doing. They were right across, their house was right across from the theater, so they've had years of kind of dealing with us. And I'm very thrilled to say they have reconsidered, they've taken their house off the market, and literally starting today, there are students who live in that house now. And it is in a direct result from us presenting to them all the things that the city council has done. So again, just thank you guys for all of your work. We have a lot more work to do, but you know, this is, this is a great start.
Well, and Jeff, before you sit down, I'm in my mode to run a meeting, so I apologize for not recognizing you as soon as you came in.
That's fine.
I've had the pleasure of being in some meetings with Jeff, and one of the strategic initiatives of Northern Illinois University is to revitalize Greek life, which goes beyond Greek Row.
Right.
We know Greek life overall, but working with Northern Illinois University right now, city manager Nicholas and myself meet with leadership team on a monthly basis. We meet with alumnus like Mr. Robey that's sitting right, well, Mr., actually, are you an NIU alum? Of course you are.
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify for the record.
Yeah.
So meeting with NIU alumnus like Mr. Robey, as well as just so many others in the community, especially when we're talking about the Greek Row area, it's really cool to see the partnership between Northern Illinois University and the city of DeKalb. I would say this council is definitely behind everything that we can do to work directly with NIU, collaboratively with NIU, because where one goes, the other goes, and we've seen that. So now it is time, and I believe everyone is at the table at this point aggressively going after, how can we make this a, a university where everyone feels like they belong? A community where everyone feels like they belong? But the two, the university and the community, really coming together, working together for the greater good of both of us. And the time and energy you're spending doing what you're doing, cheering, I definitely appreciate, and I understand. And I just wanna tell you from my standpoint, thank you for everything that you're doing to help us move the needle forward when it comes to the city of DeKalb and Northern Illinois University. So thank you.
Thank you.
You betcha. You betcha. Great way to start a meeting. Appointments. So can I just read both of them? We point them all together, or do I gotta do each?
You may open them.
That's fantastic. All right, so we have two appointments before us with Agenda Item F, reappointing J.J. Wet to the Human Relations Commission for the completion of a term through December 31st, 2024, and reappointing Rebecca Hunt, Susan Richter, and Gary Van der Meer to the DeKalb Public Library Board for terms beginning July 1st, 2022 through July 30th, 2025. I would take a motion to approve both of these in omnibus fashion.
So moved.
Fashion.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven i.
All right, they are appointed. Fantastic. All right, moving on to Agenda Item G, Approval of the Minutes. We have minutes submitted by the city clerk, none. Number two, minutes submitted by the recording secretary, which are the minutes of the regular city council meeting as of August 8th, 2022. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman McAdams.
Nicholas?
Okay. Any discussion, comments? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven i.
All right, the minutes have been approved. Moving on to number H, Consent Agenda. Number one, Accounts Payable and Payroll through August 22nd, 2022, in the amount of $2,708,501.08 and Freedom of Information Act FOIA report, July 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Smith. Comments or questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven i.
All right, the consent agenda has been passed. Moving on to public hearings, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. The time is 6:08, and it is a public hearing regarding the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, one-year use of funds for program year 29, April 1st, 2022 through March 31st, 2023, and related amendments for program years 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Did I even need, I didn't even need a motion, did I?
Yeah.
Well, now it's really official. We just doubled down. Beautiful. All right, is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak to this particular item? Mr. Kenny.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the wise and deliberate use of the CDVG funds by the city council and the city staff. Also, I would like to acknowledge and thank the staff for their efforts in preparing these amendments, and for having the foresight to clean up the accounts and make these funds available for all the good work that needs to be done. I speak to you tonight as president of Opportunity DeKalb, and as, as has been discussed in this forum before, Opportunity DeKalb is a nonprofit community development corporation that was formed as a directive of the Antiglen North Revitalization Plan, a plan passed unanimously by the city council. The formation of the CDC was identified by the plan as a high priority project. This is exactly why a group of volunteers from many areas of the community took this recommendation very seriously and formed the Opportunity DeKalb. Our mission statement is Opportunity DeKalb will lead and sustain the transformation of the Antiglen North neighborhood in collaboration with other community partners and residents. The volunteers of Opportunity DeKalb Board have put in hundreds of volunteer hours to advance this mission. Many of the board members served on the city's original 30-person task force that helped develop the plan. So most of us have been involved in this effort for over five years. And even though the city paid $30,000 to an outside company to help the citizen task force create the plan and advise the city, no funds have come from the city to the CDC to enable the CDC's work. The organization has raised all the funds to do the many initiatives and activities listed in the packet that I submitted today with my written comment, which I assume you will see at some point. With limited funding, Opportunity DeKalb has taken on the role of advocacy, outreach, and communication, connecting and convening. Opportunity DeKalb has worked with many partners to advocate for the projects outlined in the revitalization plan. This has included advocating for the redevelopment of the Walsh Park as just one example, writing a letter of support for the grant application, attending and speaking up at the park district board meetings, and raising public awareness. So when Opportunity DeKalb saw there were funds that were being shifted from completed or discontinued projects, we felt it was a good time for us to come before you tonight for the first time to begin a discussion about the assistance of funding for our work. Many times, the city staff, mayor, and council have voiced support and appreciation of the work of Opportunity DeKalb. Now, we ask for you to consider exploring ways the CDVG money can be used to help expand the scope and broaden our impact. In our research to discover revenue streams, we learned other CDCs have used block grant money in early stages of their development. Two of us on the board had a conversation with a representative of LISC, which is the Local Initiatives Support Corporation, a nonprofit, national nonprofit that works with grassroots organizations and CDCs all around the United States. Their focus is to support local organizations who are doing work to revitalize and improve the lives of those who live in struggling neighborhoods. The representative we met with from LISC advised us that a good source of revenue for many startup CDCs has been CDVG money from their municipalities. These funds in part are designed to help what HUD refers to as community-based development According to the Code of Federal Regulations, the city may provide CDVG funds as grants or loans to any CBD, CDVO-qualified under this section to carry out a neighborhood revitalization, the very work of DeKalb, of Opportunity DeKalb. So tonight, Opportunity DeKalb realizes it would delay other projects if we request amendment to the plan, so we're not asking that. Opportunity DeKalb actually voices its support of the city staff's recommendations for use of reallocated funds. However, we do ask city staff and city council to begin a conversation and the plan for how CDVG funds can be used in the future to enable Opportunity DeKalb to continue its role in the revitalization of the northwest neighborhood of DeKalb. I do not have time in this hearing to share all the work completed and the work that's planned by Opportunity DeKalb. I ask that you take the time to review the information provided as backup to my written comment. Thank you for considering this request to explore our expanded collaboration, and thank you for your work.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in attendance that wanted to speak during the public hearing? Jeff? Yeah? Okay.
Again, I'm Jeff Leesendahl, the co-chair of the, the Revitalization Task Force. When we started the task force, we were looking for input not only from alumni, from students, from the university, but we wanted to hear what DeKalb residents thought, and, and, and most importantly, people who lived in the neighborhood there. So we looked for someone who we could add to the task force, who is an advocate for the residents and for students who live there. And so actually Chad from, from Opportunity DeKalb has been our board member, our task force member since the very start. He's been a huge asset. He has, he has updated us and the university on what is going on there. He has been an advocate for our support. We have been really in touch with what's going on because of what Opportunity DeKalb is doing. We are a huge supporter of that, and I, I just wanted to, to, to comment tonight that I think it is, it is worthy of the council's support, and I, we strongly advocate for their funding because we think their efforts should, should, should be expanded, and the good work that they are doing continue to the future. We have a lot of work to do there. It's just started, though you guys may think it's been working on a long time, I think it's, we have years to go, and I think we have to fund this thing appropriately, so. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing? Hearing none. City manager, do you have any comments before I ask council?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to say that the hearing was designed to do what you've heard, people can come forward and speak to the various amendments that are proposed in your background. There's a pretty detailed summary in the actual meeting agenda, and there's an even more detailed summary prepared by Joanne Rouse, who is our community services coordinator and our administrator for the CDVG funds that come in annually, and the public has had an opportunity to see these, these comments and details as well. Later in this agenda, there'll be two action items that speak to the proposed amendments, and I'll have some more comments then.
Awesome. City council, questions, comments? Seen a lot of head shaking, all right. As always, Mr. Kenny, I appreciate, one, the work of cheering an organization. I know you are a diehard advocate, and you'd spend a lot of your own personal time trying to move the needle forward in DeKalb, and especially in the Antiglen North neighborhood. So definitely appreciate that, and then I also gotta commend the board. They work really hard as well. And then Mr. Glover, the emails I get from you on a regular basis and the amount of detail that you provide is actually wonderful. You know, email's a tough form of communication for me, but to see how you just break it all down, summarize everything, and then advocate for a particular point, don't think they're just hitting my inbox and, and I'm just, oh, blowing through it. I read every word that you write, and I do appreciate the time and energy that you spend, absolutely. And Jeff, thanks again for coming out and your support for Opportunity DeKalb. Opportunity DeKalb, as I've mentioned over and over again, has been a great partner. Love working. Bill and I are both on the, the board, so we are, well, I don't know if I'm officially on the board, but I attend all the meetings. But it's, it's a good group, really, that's helping us understand that neighborhood even more. So thank you for all that you all do. City manager, any final comments or no?
No.
Okay. All right. So I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing at 6:19. Let's see. And Joanne, I'm sure it's gonna come up again, Joanne's here somewhere. My gosh, the amount of time and energy you put into all this, holy cow. Yeah, actually, to, to take a minute, 'cause I can, the amount of work that that woman spends understanding the area, understanding the people, understanding the need, understand the organizations like Opportunity DeKalb that are out there to help us all, again, move the needle forward on our neighborhood, is phenomenal. And Joanne, I mean, just, I, I've told you this before, but I greatly, greatly appreciate the time and energy you put into the job, because it's not a job to you, and I know that. This is something where, you know, you're committed to, you're take personally the success of it, and that comes out in everything that you produce for us. So thank you so much for all the time and energy you spend on this as well. All right, moving on to Agenda Item J, Considerations, we have none. So moving on to Resolutions. Number one, Resolution 2022-071, Approving a Restaurant-Bar Liquor License for Four Guys Kitchen LLC, DBA, Elwood Steak &amp; Fish House, 2219 Sycamore Road. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Before we move into city manager's comments, by the way, if you were here just for the public hearing, I say it all the time, don't feel bad about just getting up and leaving. We appreciate you coming out tonight, but we know everyone has busy lives, so feel free to, to move on if you would like. City manager, liquor license.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there anybody in the audience tonight to speak to this? Probably not, but in any case, the soon-to-be owners of the Elwood Steak &amp; Fish House, as the background points out, Four Guys Kitchen LLC, they've applied for a restaurant bar liquor license. This, this enables them to have a conditional standing pending the award of a state license, but it also helps in that process. So we feel that their application is in order. They will be assigned an initial issuance fee, but in view of the fact that much of our fiscal year is over, then the renewal fee, which would have come up very quickly, will be prorated as we have in the past.
Can we make the liquor license pending that they cannot modify the menu or the atmosphere of the organization? No, that's not, that's not.
I second that.
You could try.
Fine.
Have no, no effect.
Because I'll personally be crushed if, if it's modified in any way, shape, or form. City council, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven i.
Resolution 2022-071 passes. And again, if an agenda item is covered and you're hearing attendance for it, don't feel bad about getting up and leaving. All right, moving on to number two, Resolution 2022-072, Approving a Substantial Amendment to the Community Development Block Grant 2020 through 2024, Five-Year Consolidated Plan, 2020 Annual Action Plan, One-Year Use of Funds for Program Year 27, April 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So this ordinance and the next ordinance speak to the content of the public hearing. These are the amendments. So why are we doing this? If you have some memory of all these details that were thrust on you tonight in the background, then you'll recall that back in January of this year, you approved a 2022 annual action plan that was part of a multi-year plan as the HUD requires as, as the keepers of the CDVG funds for our community. The reason we're doing a public hearing tonight and the two ordinances is because at that time, back in January, in January to March period, we did not know what our annual allocation was to be. We're forthright about that. We put in estimates, and there's been, it's a change in the approach that the HUD offices and, and the state are, are taking, and so now that we know the amounts, we have to go back through and identify what those known amounts are, and while we're doing it, some programs have already been completed, others are in process, other needs have been identified, and so we need to make some amendments to reflect those as we intend to spend the money. So this particular ordinance deals with, as the mayor read the title, what is basically a third substantial amendment to the Community Development Block Grant, 2020 to 2024, five-year consolidated, consolidated plan, and the 2020 Annual Action Plan, which is for program year 27. Are you with me? April 21, 2020 through March 21, 2021 is the federal program year, and the details are made available to you in the background. We recommend your approval.
Counsel. Comments, questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven i.
Resolution 2022-072 passes. Then moving on to Resolution 2022-073, Approving a Substantial Amendment to the Community Development Block Grant 2021, Annual Action Plan, One-Year Use of Funds for Program Year 28, April 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2022. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This, like the previous ordinance, has been made known and available to the public for comment. We had the public hearing tonight, which afforded people more formal opportunity to comment. There's been opportunities to comment, however, they've been more informal. Anybody could pick up the phone, call the administrator, Joanne Rouse, send in a letter, and in other ways communicate, email and otherwise. So in accordance with the guidelines, the CDVG guidelines, we bring forward the action item. This action item is, as the mayor read the title, going to amend the annual action plan for program year 28, which goes from April 21st to March 31st, or April, April 1st, 2021 to March 31st, 2022, and we recommend your approval.
Counsel.
By the way, I should say one thing. All of this retracing and refreshing and so forth is, is being done in an expedited fashion so that we can get to some projects that otherwise would probably not be done this year, and one of those, which has been something at the staff level very important, is the creation of the sidewalk connection from Twombly on the west side of Antiglen and up to Dresser to a signalized intersection which provides protection for people to cross to and from the high school on a daily basis.
Because right now, our path on Twombly ends at Antiglen, which means they have to cross Antiglen with no sort of stop sign, stoplight.
Correct.
Yeah, so from a, just student safety perspective, it's gonna be awesome to get that project done.
That's only one, but that's one.
Yeah, it's a big one. It's long overdue.
Yep.
We needed to get, and that'll be the final piece to that area that, since we built the new high school, is finally gonna be completed, and from the safety of our students, it's fantastic. Any other questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven i. Seven Eye?
Resolution 2022-073 passes. Moving on to Resolution 2022-074, appropriating the sum of $1,162,2516. A billion would be nicer. City Manager, I expect, you know, or Zach, an update on that. In rebuild Illinois bond, local allocation funds for construction and engineering services to replace the major bridge structures at North First Street and Lucinda Avenue. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And this particular resolution affects the Build Illinois, or Rebuild Illinois Bond monies. And these also involve MFT fund expenditures at the city level. We've been accumulating some of these monies for a number of projects. The Illinois Department of Transportation requires a resolution that officially appropriates these funds in the format that they mandate. So this is unnecessary action, and we support it.
Counsel, anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Thumbs up. All right. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Resolution 2022-074 passes. Now, moving on to number five, Resolution 2022-075, authorizing the award of a contract, current contracting incorporated, in the amount of $499,070.60 for the resurfacing of Knolls Avenue with staff authority to approve change orders up to a combined project total not to exceed $520,000. I would take a motion from Alderman Verbic.
So moved.
Second. All right, moved by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the last phase of our 2022 street maintenance program. The resurfacing concerns what's known as the loop, includes Knolls Avenue and some of the adjacent roads. This is the first of probably a total of three different segment and resurfacing projects. So next year, we will be active again in the Knolls, and just as we did with some other subdivision, larger subdivisions with different phases, we will get through the Knolls, and we're happy to be tackling this. This particular bid project only had one response from current construction, just under $500,000. We've asked for an additional $20,000, not to exceed $520,000, to allow for a contingency. Sometimes in older subdivisions, where we come into some unforeseen repairs that have to be done at the subgrade level, or maybe around curbs and gutters and so forth, so that should more than cover the full project for this phase.
Any questions or comments? None? So I know we were hoping to get more done, but my understanding is we had to replace all the intersections, the sidewalks.
Doing a lot of concrete work, and that was, so that's all a piece. And so we'll spend, how much in a concrete, Zach? Four? Four hundred? So just under a million.
Yeah.
And then there's next year and the following year, possibly.
And this will be the horseshoe, essentially, from entrance one to entrance two. Yeah, so that's great. I know there's going to be a lot of happy people over that. All right, roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Resolution 2022-075 passes. All right, moving on to ordinances, second reading, we have none. Ordinances, first reading. Number one, Ordinance 2022-039, amending the fiscal year-end, December 31st, 2022, budget of the City of DeKalb. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderwoman Larson. City Manager.
Thank you. I want to thank Carrie Dipman for helping me with this. As I said in the introduction here, we had some vehicles, which were part of our lease program, arrive this year, although they were expected last year, or budgeted for last year. So this year, we started the year with four police vehicles, and then in addition to that, we have four vehicles. And this year's budget, so we had eight instead of four. That's a large part of the reason why we needed to amend the budget. They're all needful, and we intended to do spending. It's just that the spending was shifted forward, or backwards, or whichever direction that is, I guess. And in addition, we've done some, the council has made some decisions concerning some infrastructure projects, and we wanted to clean that up at the same time. So this is originally going to be an amendment just to deal with the vehicle issue and to clean up that fund, and we decided we'd clean everything up to date. Carrie is very organized, and we are keeping a clean budget, darn it. So the first item has to do with our lead service replacement. So this is to come in line with accounting standards. I think originally, we classified this as grant revenue, and we are going to, or reclassifying it to grant revenue. It was originally a transfer. And so the overall impact to the Water Capital Fund is an additional $1 million, but it's being funded by 100% of ARP of grant funds, so it's about a wash. And that's item number one. Item number two is to deal with the additional costs on 13th and 14th Street, and there is an impact to the fund. It's an increase in expenditures of $358,112, which can be absorbed by the fund balance. And we can't give it back now. It's in the streets. Anyway, certainly it was a needful part of that process. Item three, there's no net effect to the general fund, but it does cover a very nice program, small in terms of overall budget impact, but with the assistance of the DeKalb Township grant, we've been able to install some knock boxes on residential homes. I want to thank the fire department cooperating with that. And this is for people who live alone or are mobility challenged. The grant amount was $8,988. That's a new revenue. It's offset, obviously, by the related expenditures, so no net effect to the general fund. Item four is a housekeeping item relating to our LPR license plate reader cameras. This was originally budgeted under supplies, parts, and technology. We weren't exactly sure what to do with that in Capital Projects Fund 400. It's being reclassified to our capital, as a capital lease principal in that same fund. No real net effect from the transaction. And now we get to the vehicles. There are six involved in this. One is a Public Works one-time aerial truck, and others are Public Works single axle dump truck, all of these which finally came through, although they had been anticipated for about a year and a half, and now they're coming available. Two used squad cars, and I want to thank the police department for looking around, finding some bargains, and that helped with the overall cost. And then two new Ford Explorers, which came through, Marl Brothers Ford. The purchase of all the vehicles, plus the upfitting, adds $377,984 to the fund's expenditures, and that can be absorbed by the current fund balance. So that's what's before you tonight. These five items come recommended from our city staff.
And the vehicles, I think you said it, but I've been in too many conversations with you, that last year, we spent nothing on vehicles, so...
Oh, we spent something, but we didn't get those four...
Correct, the police vehicles, right, right. So we're just doing it within this budget year, which is requiring the modification. Okay. Counsel, questions, comments? For me, Finance Director Dipman, it's awesome, the level of detail that you give us. No, it is. And just the fact that we're always going through and dotting our i's and crossing our t's on our financials. For city governments, there's probably not many things out there that are as important. So really appreciate you being a hawk when it comes to this stuff, and making sure that our budget and our finances are in the best possible shape. I also want to thank on Agenda Item Number Three, Mary Hessler Township Supervisor, as well as the Board of Trustees over there. May not seem like a lot, you know, $8,900, but that's a pretty cool thing to put on a bunch of people's homes, to allow our fire department to be able to come in and take care of those residents without causing any damage. So I am a big believer in the small things, too. So I definitely want to thank Township on that. Hearing no other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
So Ordinance 2022-039 passes on first reading. I would take a motion to waive second reading, right, City Manager?
Yes. So moved.
Second.
Second reading has been, a motion to waive second reading was made by Alderman Perkins and seconded by Alderwoman Larson. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven Eye?
Second reading has been waived on Ordinance 2022-039. Number two, Ordinance 2022-040, amending Chapter 30, Official Comprehensive Plan, Section 30.01, adoption by adopting the 2022 City of DeKalb Comprehensive Plan. Can I have a motion to bring it to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderman Verbic. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to take more than just a couple minutes on this, so we can bring to you...
It's pretty meaty.
A product, yeah, a product that has been percolating at the staff level, at the Planning and Zoning Commission level, in a number of public workshops, and also public hearings, and now to you. And so I think with respect to your interest and your authority, that we could spend a few more minutes on this. The Comprehensive Land Use Plan that we have currently was, as I say in the background, was approved back in 2005. It has the essential components that comprehensive land use plans usually do. It's a history. Usually, the first part of it is, where have we been? Here's the inventory. This is where we are now. And then the formulation of goals and objectives for the period of the new plan, which is usually somewhere around five years, sometimes they go 10 years, in a really dynamic growth atmosphere, when the table is sort of turned upside down, sometime like during the housing boom in the early 2000s, the communities were doing comprehensive land use plans every three years or so. Things were changing that fast. And ultimately, in addition, there's got to be a future land use plan. So let me just say something upfront. I was going to say this later in my presentation, but as we saw in some of the open houses, people were saying, well, so where's all the zoning here, and what are we talking about? Well, it's not a zoning plan. It's basically a canvas, which paints a very broad, broad strokes and dramatic primary colors. The essential land uses and where they exist, and how they might expand or be contracted if they don't actually represent developed land. And the proposed plan before you tonight actually has a little bit of both of those. So since the adoption of the 2000 plan, all planning has, land use planning hasn't stopped. In fact, we, the councils before us have approved nine subarea and corridor plans, and they are noted in your background and also in the plan itself. They all, in their own way, still have some relevance. There are pieces of them. They're worth reading, and especially good to see where we've been, so you can sort of estimate where we might be headed and where we might go. But notwithstanding the attention that they gave to different specific areas of our community, this comprehensive land use plan is overdue. The areas that the plan tackles are a very general section on community appearance, and then the various kinds of uses, generic uses, residential, commercial, industrial types of development. Our downtown area, what could be done to enhance the downtown. Economic development, writ large, community facilities, which should be government facilities, but not just government facilities. Natural features that are so very much a part of our community and any planning with integrity. Here we are, living in an area that has some of the richest soils in the world, and our county is still about 90% agricultural in its purposes, so I think it's important that we look at that. And in transportation, which any plan has to have, how are we going to commute across the planning area, and what's the best way to do that to minimize the kinds of problems that larger urban areas get into? The statutory body at the municipal level that has the responsibility to recommend the plan to you, as I mentioned earlier, the City's Planning and Zoning Commission. The commission reviewed our staff drafts back in April, May, April 4th, May 2nd, May 16th, and June 6th. We had open houses in late June and early, in mid-July. We have obviously published a notice before, or we did before the Planning and Zoning Commission's public hearing on this. And not only has this been done formally in the Daily Chronicle, a paper of local distribution, but we have also done this, obviously, on our website and in other ways. So the public has been made aware, and also on our social media pages. The proposed plan, then, am I going too fast?
No.
So, oh, one last thing. So what is our planning area? I mean, how far do we get the plan? Do we get the plan to the north end of DeKalb County, and, you know, down the sandwich and so forth? No. By statute, that planning area is not only what we consider our corporate limits now, but a mile and a half in any direction from any point on our periphery. So it's not a perfect circle. We have kind of jagged lines all around. It's like a starburst, and so it goes here and then back, and here and then back. And one of the things we try to do in this particular proposed plan is to not to aggressively go out to the end of that mile and a half area, where we have no, at least on the basis of development interest, in the last five years or so, we have shown no particular interest in disrupting the natural features of that area. Okay. So here are just some of the things that are highlighted in your background. I won't read through all of them, but one thing that has certainly been of interest to this council and in many presentations in this room is that hot growth area of industrial sites on the south side of DeKalb. That was shown partly as a future industrial area, but also there was some commercial and residential mixed in. But that area between South Fourth Street and Peace Road, where it touches Gerler and north and south of Gerler Road, and that corridor, we've painted that entirely industrial. That's basically been your wishes, as we have annexed and led to development of those particular parcels. Also, there's a very large area, as you, let me get you in here. Okay. That's the land use plan, very small, but the colors kind of paint the picture. If you look at the east side of Peace Road, a lot of that to the end of, to the east, till we hit the, our boundary line, shared boundary line with Cortland, is painted purple, and that is to designate potential areas for future industrial growth. The plan in the past has designated a lot of the undeveloped area within our planning area on the peripheries, particularly, say, the northwest and the southwest sides, a little bit in the central, north-central area, as yellow, and meaning low-density residential. We don't know what could go there, so let's just paint it. We have purposely, for your consideration, not done that. We've gone out about one parcel more beyond where we are. Doesn't mean we can't expand beyond, but that makes it possible to, not only to show a positive, purposeful preservation of farmland, but we also are probably going to consider adding an ag designation. You usually don't have ag zoning within a municipal boundary, but to do that, to designate the intent to preserve that land if, for agricultural purposes, if there is no other logical purpose, given the plan's general bias overall. We have also looked to preserve open space, largely within the Kewaqui River Branch areas. It has been preserved. Generally speaking, we are continuing that preservation as we move forward. There have been mixed-use designations in a smaller version like this, you really can't see them very well, but we have, as an example, on Lucinda Avenue, get in here, I'm not going to see it very well, in the, right there, what used to be the Village Commons bookstore area. Obviously, that's a mixed-use development. It's been that way for a long time. It had been designated to something else, and so we have shown it as possibly developing over time for mixed-use purposes. The redevelopment of the core of the Antiglitten North Neighborhood, which was a topic which we talked about earlier in this area, is also something that we wanted to highlight, and again, that would be mixed-use as well. And I'll stop there. There's a lot more to see, and it's part of your document, and you can also see this document online. So the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed plan on August 15th, just a week ago, and unanimously recommended it to you. And with your approval, it would become an amendment to our Chapter 30 in the municipal code, which is the official comprehensive plan portion of the municipal code, and we support their recommendation.
Thank you, City Manager. Counsel, questions, comments? Yes, Alderwoman Larson, or Alderwoman Morris, sorry.
I just have one comment. I was really excited to see under Item 10 in here... I just have one comment. I was really excited to see under item 10 in here, the promotion of an interdependence of land uses, rather than promoting certain uses on islands, removed from normal patterns of travel, the plan attempts to promote neighborhood clusters and combine residential districts with schools, daycare centers, small markets, and other ancillary services. I just really appreciate that being a focal point in here, because I think in my experience and having lived all over the country, that's really what makes a community amazing.
Thank you.
So glad to see you guys doing that.
That's a tenet of the new urbanism, which is now about 15 years old, but I think it's still as meaningful today as it was when it was first promulgated.
Other questions, comments?
Yes, Alderman Verbic.
Just a comment to Dan and staff and everyone that worked on this. Great work. For those that participated and provided public input, thank you. And I think the result is outstanding, is a living document that hopefully we continue to reflect on and maybe update more often as it goes.
Agreed.
Any others?
I love reading the document, you know, especially, kind of to your point in a way, but also just the connectivity of all the different neighborhoods via walkable paths, that seemed to come up quite a lot. And even if you read the Annie Glidden North Revitalization Plan, when you look in there and how much walkability and connectivity was a part of that, you know, I think we have a long way to go still towards that, but whether it's the bike path underneath the bridge on 1st Street, whether it's the path that we talked about from Twombly to Dresser, we continue to do more and more of those year after year, which is great. I also really liked, and I know this is all guidelines and recommendations, it's not law, but just the architectural improvements on both commercial and industrial, whether it was different colors, different roof lines, you name it, we were really trying to think about, if you're going to develop something in our community now, you need to read this, you need to get an understanding of some of the guidelines that we're talking about, to start the conversation there, which I thought was fantastic. And then I agree with the public input. You know, if you look in our packet at the end, they listed all the public input from the different public hearings that happened. So it was just a lot of great feedback from the community, not just at those hearings, but I also heard a bunch of it as well. Yes?
Just one last thing, and joining you, Mayor, and Councilmember Verbic, and other council members who have spoken to the staff effort here, the most instrumental figure has been Dan Olson, our Planning Director. We've also had support from Stephanie Turner, our Administrative Assistant, who supports Dan and many of the things that he does and the Planning Commission does. And on graphics standpoint, the very modest Scott Zach sitting in the front row there, and Doug Eaton, our Planning Technician, who's helped a lot with the modeling and the mapping, couldn't have done it without them. So thanks to their assistance.
Awesome. All right. Hearing none, other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance 2022-040 passes on first reading.
Motion to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
Motion to waive second reading by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2022-040. Moving on to number three, ordinance 2022-041, amending Chapter 49 Human Relations Commission as it pertains to frequency of meetings. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman McAdams, seconded by Alderwoman Morris. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. A number of our boards and commissions have been talking through the late spring and early summer about the frequency of their meeting, and some of those have come before you in ordinance form, and changes have been made. At the August 9th meeting of the Human Relations Commission, a similar conversation occurred. The commission took a vote and unanimously recommended that they meet on a bimonthly basis, knowing that special meetings could be held if necessary. And that's before you tonight as an ordinance change.
Council? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance 2022-041 passes on first reading.
Motion to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
Motion to waive second reading by Alderman Verbic, seconded by Alderman Perkins. Roll call, please.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance 2022-041, second reading has been waived. All right, ordinance 2022-042, amending Chapter 23 Unified Development Ordinance, Article 5.12, High Heavy Industrial District, Add Solar Energy Generation Facility Solar Farm as a Special Use in Article 7.16, Solar Energy Systems, to establish regulations for solar energy generation facilities, solar farms. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. We have talked a number of times in the last couple of years about solar energy systems, solar farms, and in fact, the next ordinance item, we'll be talking again about the Sunvest Solar Project on our airport facility. And it has occurred to us that we better have something referring to solar energy generation facilities or solar farms, or words to that effect in our UDL, so that we don't have to kind of stumble over the process going forward. So I thank Dan Olson for pointing out the wisdom of this. There are some text amendments that are before you here tonight, which provide a little more clarity. And these standards were developed by Dan after reviewing other solar energy ordinances. DeKalb County has one, Rochelle has one, as well as some standards for solar farm development, such as our own language that grew out of our association with Bill French, who's in the audience tonight, and will be talking to the next item for a project down on Gerler Road. And so the Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission had a public hearing on the proposed text amendments last week, and supported them by a vote of four to zero, and we support their recommendation.
Council, questions, comments? Hearing none on that? Roll call, please.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance 2022-042 passes on first reading.
Move to waive second reading and approve?
Second.
All right. Motion to waive second reading by Alderwoman Morris, seconded by Alderman McAdams. Questions or comments on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Second reading has been waived for ordinance 2022-042. All right, moving on to number five, ordinance 2022-043, approving a special use permit for a solar energy generation facility, solar farm, on approximately 49-acre site along the north side of Pleasant Street, across from the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport. Sunvest Solar LLC, doing business as DeKalb Taylor Solar LLC. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman McAdams. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. It was back in mid-December that the council approved a land lease and solar easement agreement with Sunvest Solar, and that was sort of a milestone for us and for the future development of the airport. We understood at the time that there would be a period of due diligence in which both parties will look at the feasibility of proceeding to the next threshold, which is where we are tonight. We thought it would take a year, maybe more. I'm happy to say that working with Bill French, we found a very eager partner and someone who knows the stuff. And we're here tonight to ask that you approve a special use permit, which gets us now to the threshold of, we're not beginning, but Mr. French and his company beginning, the creation of this solar energy facility. The details in the documents are in your background. This is, of course, of interest to people who live along Pleasant Street, and along the way, there's been adjustments and setbacks. The minimum 50-foot front yard setback is provided along Pleasant Street, and for the most part, the balance of the solar facility will be set back a minimum 50 feet from property lines, but there will be an increase to 100 feet from the residential property located at the southwest corner of the property there on Pleasant Street. So we feel that that's appropriate. So did the Planning and Zoning Commission. Obviously, there are more details to this. There's also a decommissioning plan, which is part of the council's concern when we were going through this and working on the lease, and that has not changed. It's still an integral part of this particular, of the original agreement. And the Planning and Zoning Commission took all this into account and supported the idea of the special use petition unanimously, and recommended it to you last week, and we support their recommendation.
Council?
Yes.
Alderman Morris?
I just want to say that I appreciate that the decommissioning plan was made a part of this, and I appreciate the extensive detail and thought put into this, both the communication and the plan, including details like diverse native vegetation and stuff like that, which I think is going to be a great feature for our community.
Alderman Smith?
Thanks, Dan, for dealing with all the questions, I think, that popped up, and thank you for your excellent, quickly and excellent responses. I think everybody was very happy out there. Dan, unless you have any other input from the residents, I think everybody was on the same page, but especially on the setback, I think, was the big issue. So thank you for that.
I agree. I had a couple as well, and city staff resolved everyone's concerns, so that was great. Any other questions or comments? All right, hearing none. Roll call, please.
Verbic?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
Ordinance 2022-043 passes on first reading.
Motion to waive second, motion to do the second reading thing.
To waive second reading, okay.
Yes, second.
All right. I have a motion to waive second reading by Alderwoman Morris, and a second by Alderman Smith. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Morris?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
McAdams?
Yes.
Verbic?
Yes.
Mayor Barnes?
Yes.
Seven I?
All right, so second reading has been waived for ordinance 2022-043. Moving on to agenda item N, Reports and Communications, number one, council member reports. Who would like to kick us off? Alderman McAdams.
No report.
Okay. Alderman Smith?
13th Street is done. Thank you, Zach, for addressing all the needs and information out there. I think everybody is happy. I think PD's been up there and just trying to pick off a few of the people that want to make it a shortcut. And I will be having a ward meeting at Fire Station Number One, thank you Chief Thomas, on August 31st. You accepted, so we're in, we're here, from 6:00 to 7:30. And hopefully, we'll be showing up some new equipment that he promised me will be there. So, or at least your deputy chief did.
Alderwoman Morris?
So it's not in my ward, but downtown is looking amazing. Looks done to me, and right in time for Corn Fest, right?
Woo-hoo, exactly.
So just want to remind everybody about Corn Fest. It's just next weekend, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Super excited, looking forward to it. That's all.
Alderwoman Larson?
That was exactly what I was going to invite everybody to come downtown, and don't just drive through it. Walk down the sidewalks. I mean, they're gorgeous. I am so glad that I live in DeKalb. It is a really pretty downtown. You got to come see it. Come to Corn Fest.
Alderman Perkins?
Yeah, the downtown looks great. I would encourage everyone to find the YouTube drone footage of it. Really cool looking. And get out and support the Barbs for fall sports coming up.
Alderman Verbic? NIU students, faculty, and staff, welcome, or welcome back. It's great that you're back, lively as ever on campus and then throughout Ward Six. And yes, go Barbs.
Love it. But it's been a really busy couple of weeks. I want to definitely double down on the whole downtown thing, or triple down. It is really cool, and that drone footage is just amazing, just to see the transformation, which is great, as well as the transformation just on new developments downtown. Seeing Cornerstone, seeing Plaza, seeing Agora, from that visual is just really cool. Also, been meeting with the Citizens Community Enhancement Commission, a lot of activity on some murals that we've been looking at. So that's all going to be starting to take place here soon, which I'm really excited to bring some of that before council, so we can all see what those are going to look like. And again, the T-Mobile $50,000 grant was a funding mechanism for that, which is phenomenal. Always got to appreciate our Finance Advisory Commission for, you know, the time that they spend, and the due diligence that they help us do, and taking the time out to have a joint meeting with us was great. And I think we have another one next Monday as well. Isn't that correct? Joint meeting, Finance Advisor, yeah?
Oh.
Is it next Monday?
In October.
Oh, it's in October?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was next week. Okay. Also, after, yeah, sorry. After that meeting, I did go and meet with DARA. That's the DeKalb Area Renters Association. They had their quarterly meeting and asked me to come out, teed up the conversation. Alderman Verbic and I, and City Manager Nicholas, have had a conversation about, you know, what can we do to make sure that we protect ourselves from irresponsible landlords in the future? And DARA is a great group to tee that off with, because they are some incredibly responsible landlords. So that was just the beginning of that conversation. Also went to Serf's Up, which is across from the 7-Eleven on Annie Glidden, met Don Taylor, just a great, great guy, just passionate about the area. And I'm just calling it out, because it was just such a great conversation. And I had his fried lobster. I don't know if you've ever had fried lobster before, but it was, it was dynamite. Also attended a University Village Collaborative Event, where they were handing out backpacks. That was really driven as well by the Family Service Agency. They did a great job. It was a huge turnout. We had pizzas for everyone, waters. Joanne was a big contributor and helped in that as well, but it was just wonderful to see a bunch of kiddos leaving that event with backpacks full of stuff by the school that they're attending, in order to start school off on the right foot, which is just great. Yes, the DeKalb Barbs Sports are starting, but it's also the First National Challenge Friday, if I remember right.
Yep.
So the First National Challenge is happening this Friday at Husky Stadium, which is going to be really cool to see. And then I, as well, would definitely welcome all students and faculty back, or if it's your first time here, super glad to have you. Also want to remind everyone, tomorrow, Underwood, or sorry, Congresswoman Underwood is going to be here for her town hall that is taking place at the DeKalb Taylor Municipal Airport. It starts, doors open at 5:00. Get there no later than 5:15, but she's here just to bring us up to speed on a federal level of what's going on, and also to have just a bunch of Q and A. And there's probably already 70 people signed up, so it should be a really cool event. I would highly recommend everyone coming out for that. And then, yes, the DeKalb Corn Fest starts this Friday. So really looking forward to seeing it in the new downtown, seeing all those sidewalks that are wider now, packed with people. So that's going to be really exciting, and it should just be a great time for everyone. So I hope to see all of us down there enjoying some of that corn. And that's all I got. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to Councilmember Perkins for mentioning that YouTube video. It was created by our former employee, Marcus Cox, and his drone, and it really is worth seeing, and it's accessible through our website. Is that correct? Very good. That's all I have.
Still love your reaction to the, "Don't we have a fact meeting?"
Don't do it again, please.
All right. Moving on, agenda item O, Executive Session, we have none, so then that puts us at Agenda Item P, Adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Alderwoman Larson. It's like, really? We don't really? Seconded by Alderman Verbic. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, same sign? All right, we are adjourned.